Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the March 21st Currituck County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. At 6:00 PM this afternoon, we had a work session with the Whalehead Trust to talk about their master plan vision that they have for 10 to 15-year future. Next, we have Reverend Walter Gallup. Welcome, sir. With us this evening to lead us in prayer and to pledge allegiance, and if everyone will please stand.
Thank you, Vance. Let us pray. God of our fathers and our nation, you have made our lot to fall in this fair land. We come before you with a prayer for our commissioners, our officers, our appointed officials, and all those who share in the ordering of our community life. Give us strength, honor, and charity to all our fellow citizens that we may do our work seeking not the good over any party, any faction, but the respect for all of our citizens. By your strength, our fathers and mothers made us free citizens. For your law and love of country, they gave their lives. Oh, God, give us wisdom and strength to save our land from greed and corruption, from pride and arrogance. Protect us from tyrants and misrule. Give to our leaders wisdom and to our people patience, that together we may achieve a better life and a better law, a pure life and a more abundant opportunity for all. In our passion, oh God, sometimes we make mistakes. We are confronted every day with conflicting opinions and strong appeal to our emotions. Help us to separate the half-truths, the fears, the false accusations from the truth that can make us free. Make our republic a peacemaker and a hope to all the world. Give us a share in her upbuilding and her defense, and a jealous care for her abiding honor among all nations, that in liberty and self-restraint, in prosperity and charity, in strength and gentleness, this ownership of state may forever be worthy of her origin and her destiny. Hear our prayers, oh Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gallup. Item one, approval of the agenda. I would like to add an item to the consent agenda. It would be a resolution asking the Department of Transportation to do a speed limit study on Popper Branch Road. Do I have a motion? Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item two is public comment period. This is a time when someone may talk about any issue not appearing on tonight's agenda. I ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes, and Mr. McCree will be our timekeeper. We have first signed up Denise Fallon. Please come forward and give your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Denise Fallon, and my address is 100 Andrew Road, Grandy, North Carolina. I'm here on behalf of Currituck County High School, and I have two of my colleagues here with me tonight, Teresa Brinkley and Crystal Schultz, and they're two of our advisors for our student government. I wanted to just take an opportunity. These two ladies have taken on Project Graduation for us in conjunction with our student government organization at Currituck High School. Project Graduation is a structured, organized way for students to celebrate graduation after the ceremony, and it's a fine opportunity for our graduates to celebrate in a safe environment. I know in the past, and I think that you've already allocated funds, but in the past you've donated money to help with that event. During the event, they also give out prizes to students that they can help them with their endeavors after high school, college, or the workplace, or whatever they choose to do. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for your support of that endeavor that we have in trying to provide something safe for our students. It really means a lot to us and to these ladies as they plan that event, so I wanted to just take this opportunity to thank you and answer any questions if you have those. As Mr. Martin smiles at me.
The thanks goes to you folks for doing what you do to keep our kids safe, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Only a comment. They need volunteers, parent volunteers, to support the graduating class, so if you have a child in school, please take the time to learn about the graduation programs and the things that go along with it.
And it is an all-night event after the graduation ceremony, and we're going to Norfolk. We haven't confirmed what our plans are, but as most of you know, educators are pretty worn out that last week of school, so we need all the help we can get to chaperone. We've got a lot on board, but we can take some more certainly. So thank you, Mr. Martin, for that.
Mr. Scanlon, do we have money budgeted program for that?
Yes, sir, we do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have American Legion Post 531. Don't know your name, sir, but if you please give your name and...
My name is Dick Palllett, P-A-L-L-E-T-T-E. My address is 106 Ratcliffe Road, Moyoc, North Carolina. I thought it was time we put a face to a name, and we are the newest American Legion post in the area. We're servicing Moyoc, Sligo, Down County, Shawboro, and some from Camden County because they did not have a post there. We're here to help. We're not here to beg, and we just let you know that we're here. We've got 30 people here that'll be glad to help anything and endeavors. The only question we have is if you know who is representing us. I'm the adjutant, which means I'm the secretary. Bill Sadler back here, he's the first assistant commander, vice commander, and Carlos Walker, which you might know, he's the commander. And we would really like you to realize that who we are, and that one thing we would like you to know is that there's a fellow around here that was handling a lot of government affairs. Chris, I don't know what his last name is.
Curtis.
Curtis, Chris Curtis. He does not represent Post 531, and what we're trying to do is, in the last few years, we've had the Veterans Day Parade up by the center up here, and we found that this year that he had taken it over and that we were not allowed to have it up there because he had a interfaith council that was going to put on a big shindig. So we really don't know what has happened, and we would like to know why we were not allowed to have our little parade up there.
Nobody knows.
I don't have a clue. Does anyone?
It was so, Chris handled it last year, and it was so poorly planned that we told him last year that we would start the first year, we had a committee, and he, in other words, he hasn't accepted our help, and we can't pull on by ourselves because the county says that they've got something else going on that day. So just to let you know who we are, and that we represent the American Legion in Moyoc and the surrounding area, and we appreciate to be here and to help any help you need. Just give us a holler.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your service and your member service to our...
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a gentleman a question? Is Bob Coler in your chapter?
No.
Okay.
Bob Coler? Pardon me. Yes, he was. Bob Coler left the chapter, the post in Moyoc. Bob Coler came to our and was allowed in.
The reason for, it's not, I just hear he's under the weather, and I was wondering how he was doing.
But he's not with us any longer. He resigned.
Okay, that's fine. I was just wondering what happened to Bob Coler. I'm going to open up a can of worms. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Peter Bishop, our Economic Development Director. If you'll please come forward and give your name and address.
Peter Bishop, and my address is 153 Courthouse Road, right here in beautiful Currituck County, my office being right down the hallway. Only take a minute of your time this evening. Thank you very much. I have two things I'd like to talk about. First of all, tomorrow evening is the City of Chesapeake's hearing on the proposed toll increase for the Chesapeake Expressway. That is March 22nd at 6:00 PM at Chesapeake City Hall, 306 Cedar Road in Chesapeake. I will be there representing the Board of Commissioners in our opposition to this toll increase, so just a reminder to all the citizens out there, if they'd like to make a comment, please join us 6:00 PM up at Chesapeake City Council Hall. The second item I wanted to discuss is an announcement of some training opportunities for our local businesses. We had a press release today for partnership with the SBTDC Northeast Workforce Development Board and Industrial Extension of North Carolina State, along with our local chamber and this Economic Development Office to put on the 2011 Business Training Series. We will be kicking off the first of those training events on April the 12th in Corolla at Brynley Beach Vacations. That will be an essential selling course where we will be teaching folks the essentials of sales and improving their sales and bottom line coming into this new season. It'll be very important for you to sharpen and freshen up those skills. This is normally a $300 class that is offered for a very low cost. I believe it's $15 per registrant, and there are two, limit two per business, so that is April the 12th, that is a Tuesday, and it is at Brynley Beach Vacations in Corolla from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and there's more information on currituckgovernment.com or thinkcurrituck.com to register for that event. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Paul O'Neil, one of our distinguished commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things I want to talk about is when we sent out the county newsletter this past week, there was a lot of information about flooding and flood insurance and different things. It's my understanding that the Board of Commissioners can challenge the flood zones as they have been, well, not proposed, but as they were proposed and adopted on the Outer Banks, and anybody that lives on the Outer Banks and purchases flood insurance knows what I'm talking about. It is ridiculous. And I had a chart I wanted to show, but Mr. Woody couldn't get it on there tonight, but Travelers Insurance has done a study from 18, what, Mr. Woody? What's the year at the top?
71.
1871 until 2005, and there has not been a named hurricane that took a direct hit from Currituck County, from the point of Currituck County, Currituck's beaches, going up all the way through the state of Virginia. Since 1871, there has not been a named storm that took a direct hit on us, but yet our flood insurance and our homeowner's insurance is just out of bounds. But if we can get the flood zones changed somewhat, that is going to have an effect on what people are paying for flood insurance. Now, I remember when the flood maps were adopted at the last time, it was brought to my attention after they were adopted that we could have challenged them. Staff, not you at that time, did not let the commissioners know that, so they were adopted. Well, now I'm being told you can still challenge those flood map designations, and if that is the case, I want the staff to do some research, find out what it is we need to do, and then we need to take a methodical look at that and challenge those flood maps to have them redrawn to alleviate some of the pressure that the folks in Currituck County are having on their insurance. I mean, it's just ridiculous. So I don't know the process or the procedure. I would just like for the Board to concur with direction to the staff to look into it to see if there is, in fact, a way that we can ask for a redrawing of the flood maps.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Scanlon, you have it. Next, I am very privileged this evening to present a resolution of recognition to the Currituck County Ducks Unlimited chapter. Do you, there's a lot of good things throughout our country. I mean, they provide monies to restore habitat for wildlife, and I'm just very honored to do this. So I see Mr. Chris Hooper is here. If you'll join me at the front, sir. I appreciate it.
Whereas Ducks Unlimited is the world's leader in wetland and waterfowl conservation, and whereas Ducks Unlimited got its start in 1937 during the Dust Bowl when North Americans' drought-plagued waterfowl population had plunged to unprecedented lows, and whereas, determined not to sit idly by as the continent's waterfowl dwindled beyond recovery, a small group of sportsmen joined together to form an organization that became known as Ducks Unlimited. And whereas, one of these sportsmen, Joseph Palmer Knapp, resident and businessman of New York, spent part of every year at his home on Mackey Island in Currituck County, and whereas Mr. Knapp founded More Game Birds and American Foundation, which later became Ducks Unlimited, and whereas Ducks Unlimited conserves, restores, and manages wetlands and associated habitat for North American waterfowl, and whereas, the vision of Ducks Unlimited is wetlands sufficient to fill the skies with waterfowl today, tomorrow, and forever. And whereas, the local Currituck County chapter of Ducks Unlimited is ranked in the top 100 out of 3,600 chapters in the United States. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Currituck County Board of Commissioners recognize the Currituck County chapter of Ducks Unlimited for its support of the conservation of North American waterfowl, and be it further reserved, resolved that on behalf of the residents and visitors of Currituck County, the Board of Commissioners express our appreciation to the Currituck chapter of Ducks Unlimited for the dedication to the preservation of Currituck County waterfowl habitat. Adopted this 21st day of March 2001, and signed by myself, and thank you, sir.
On behalf of the Currituck chapter of Ducks Unlimited, I would like to thank the commissioners and the county for this honor. We have worked for the waterfowl, and our banquet is this Saturday at Hampton Lodge Campground, beginning at 6:30, and thank you.
Do you have any tickets left?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Phone number for tickets would be?
453-3502.
Thank you. Next, we have item four, Public hearing in action, PB 1031, Currituck County, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 2, Section 2.7 in Chapter 11, Section 11.5, to address land disturbance permitting requirements for existing lots and reduce minimum widths for lots in the R-1 zoning district. I guess...
Mr. Doxy, we present your staff.
Okay, Mr. Doxy and Mr. Weatherly, I guess you'll want to speak on that. I think you both, you need to be, do you need to be sworn? No?
No.
Ben's going to start, then Eric, then myself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a text amendment request that was initiated by the county staff. I like to think of it as more of a cleanup request. There's really not a whole lot new here. We're just trying to address some things that the staff has worked with over the past year or two. We want to bring it to your attention. Mr. Eric Weatherly here, county engineer, is going to talk about how and when we allow increases in lot coverage. As you know, the UDO gives every property owner a certain amount of their lot they can cover with impervious surface. From time to time, we have lot owners that want to increase that or put more coverage on their lot. That is allowed if approved by the county engineer, but what we're trying to do is put some criteria in the ordinance, so when you ask for that extra lot coverage, it's very clear how that process works and what the expectations are. What Mr. Doxy is going to talk about tonight is what's called land disturbance permits. Land disturbance permits are a fancy way of saying a fill permit. If you, and PUD lots are excluded from this, and lots that were platted after 19, or after 2003 that have lot line swells aren't covered under this, but the rest of the lots in Currituck County, if you put fill on your lot, that raises your lot higher than the adjacent grades, i.e. you're going to shed water on your neighbors, you've got to get what's called a land disturbance permit. Mr. Doxy's going to, again, go over some of those requirements and explain how that's triggered, why it's triggered, and again, we're trying to clarify or make the process more straightforward, when it occurs and how it occurs. And the last thing is, in the R-1, again, this is outside of the PUDs, our current ordinance requires a 125-foot lot width. If you look at a plaid of Whalehead and Ocean Hill 1, you'll see almost all the lots are either 100-foot or less in width. We're suggesting that the dimensional requirements be changed to allow 100-foot lot width to be consistent with what's actually on the ground now. I can answer any questions on that part of the amendment, and with that, I'll turn it over to Eric to address the increases in lot coverage.
Thank you, Ben. Eric Weatherly, county engineer. What Ben said opened it up. Basically, we're talking about stormwater requirements on individual lots, and there's three things that kick it in when you want to increase your lot coverage, or you want to fill your lot, or you're a commercial, and you have to go through a TRC process. And like Ben said, these are not new rules, but we're trying to quantify what's in the rule. So on the lot coverage, Section 2.7 goes over how much coverage you can put on a lot. Basically, it's around 30%, but it says in there that the county engineer can approve an additional 15% if they do, if they have two things. Either the lot is in a subdivision that already has a stormwater plan, or they, 50% of that lot coverage is with a turf stone or a impervious-type material. So what we would like to do is leave the stormwater requirement in there. If you're in a subdivision that has a stormwater plan, then you can increase your lot coverage up to what that state stormwater permit will allow. But the second one, the change, is that we would like to do away with the turf stone and require a stormwater plan, and that plan would have to be engineered. He would have to go out and do the surveying, the grading, locate the groundwater table, and do a stormwater plan that would hold a four-inch rain, and then the engineer would have to certify it was built in accordance with his plans, and then the owner would have to certify that he'll maintain it. So the big thing on the lot coverage is we'll still allow the increase, but you still got, you'll have to do a stormwater plan. I don't think, I probably get one, maybe two of these a year, so it's not very often. Usually, there's a problem, and there's already an engineer involved. All right? With that, I'll give it to Mike with the fill permit.
I'll go all the way back to Mike Doxy, Currituck soil and water technician. I'll go all the way back to the year 1997. In 97, and again in 2000, and in 2003, all three of those were wet years, so in three out of the six years in that timeframe, we had extremely wet weather, and that prompted, the biggest thing it prompted was septic tank failure in subdivisions such as Whalehead over on the Outer Banks. When it prompted the septic tank failure, people, the health department started raising the requirements and raising the lots. Another thing it prompted was people to build up their lot to get out of the flooding, rightly so, I mean, because as y'all know, at the time, back then, Whalehead didn't have a stormwater management plan, and nowhere for the water to go except for in people's yards. This shows a house flooded. The first one was the house flooded, this from the neighbor to the right, built up about two foot. The neighbor on the left built a berm around his yard and put a pump, a sump pump in his yard, and was pumping in his neighbor's backyard, and this is what you get. One misconception about all this is, more than likely, 9.99% of the time, that area flooded before any of those houses were ever built there, so that's the issue we deal with. And then, when somebody comes in and displaces that floodwater with a house pad and a septic tank, then it pushes more water on the neighbors. Not a lot, but enough to always cause problems. So what we did in 2003 and '04, we did two things. One is we required lot line swales in new subdivisions. Another thing we did was create a land disturbance permit for excessive fill. Now, how it got called a land disturbance permit, I don't know. It wasn't from me, because I think it should be called a fill permit, exactly what it is, a fill permit. But at any rate, we've required, we've always required an engineer to apply for a land disturbance permit for the applicant, and we've required a stormwater plan. The biggest negative thing about it is, that was the only thing that the ordinance says and our application says, was it has to be a stormwater management plan. Well, any engineer come and say, well, you know, when it rains, it's going to run into the ground. We deal with that every day. The ordinance does not specifically spell out what has to be done in a stormwater management plan. What this ordinance does, this is before you tonight, is require a four-inch rainfall to be held on site by that stormwater management plan. We've always had an engineer to do it. That's not a problem. Yes, we get complaints when the average homeowner, a home builder, he hasn't got a house yet, but builds a house and has to hire an engineer to do a stormwater management plan, which costs, you know, the last I heard, it was about $1,500 just to do that. Now, you know, it still varies from about $500 up to about $1,500 to hire an engineer to do a stormwater management plan on an individual lot. But typically, if it's done right, you see here, we also, in 2003, stopped any fill from being placed in the 10-foot setback, and by not putting any fill in there, that at least leaves a natural swale. And that last one you just showed, that one right there, these people that fill, this guy built a berm, put a pump in, but at least he stayed back off the property line 10 feet. The guy on the right-hand side, he built his lot up for the septic to get out of the flooding, but he left 10 feet. So it leaves a 20-foot area of a natural swale, which is what we're looking for. Even in new subdivisions, the natural swales are, there's not really a visible swale or ditch or anything, but the houses are 18 to 24 inches higher house pad, and then as it is graded over to the lot, the property line, and it's graded down, it leaves a natural area. So that's what we're looking for in new subdivisions. But the application, it requires a detailed stormwater plan. We're adding to the ordinance tonight in front of you to only two things. One is to exempt those subdivisions before 2003. That's part of it tonight. And the other thing is to require a four-inch rainfall, and it can easily be done by the swales that you see here. On either side, one side or both sides of the lot, a swell down one or both sides can easily capture four inches of rainfall, and it's only from the impervious surfaces on that lot, the rooftop and the driveways, and maybe a storage shed, and maybe a concrete around a pool. It's not the whole lot, because in a grassed area, a flat area, you know, a lot of dust seeping to the ground. But that's what we're here proposing tonight, and hopefully you'll see fit to approve that amendment, and we'll at least have some details for, that they'll have to show us to hold a four-inch rainfall on site.
Mr. Chairman, any questions? Anyone have any questions for Mr. Doxy, Mr. Weatherly, or Mr. Woody?
I'm sorry. I forgot to say an important thing. The planning board heard this at their previous meeting, and they did recommend approval of this, and I should have acknowledged that. I apologize.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions?
Yes. Mr. Doxy, my understanding now that, because you and I have talked about this quite a bit...
That's right.
...that people can do the swales in most circumstances without having to go get an engineer.
We have been seeing that happen, and, you know, they do complain, well, I can put swell, you know, they always say, you know, "We can put a swell in down either side and capture that rainfall. There's the plan without having to hire an engineer." I agree that that can be done, and, you know, if y'all see fit, we can try that. We're in the process of rewriting our UDO, and we're in the process of designing a countywide stormwater manual. And we, I'm saying, we can maybe try what you're suggesting in the meantime to see how that's going to work, because that's going to be a true test. We'll do 20 or 30 land disturbance permits between now and next winter.
Well, I understand somewhere like Whalehead, you're not going to be able to just say, "A swell, and you're fine," or whatever. But there's a lot of places over here on the mainland that people don't need to go and get a $1,500 engineered study, that all it is is a math calculation for the rainfall. And then that's another $1,500 layer of bureaucracy on somebody that may not need it. So I think we need to be a little flexible on this, that not everybody is going to be required. Because I can tell you right now, the first person that has to go do this on a lot that doesn't need it, they're going to be calling us. And we're going to get the phone calls, and you're going to get the phone calls, and then Ben's going to get the phone calls, and Eric, too. We're not going to leave him out of the loop either. But, you know, we, there are circumstances, as you and I talked about, that they don't really need to go get that permit, or that engineer study. And I don't want us to require everybody to have to get it if it's not necessary.
I think Mr. Doxy presents a good analysis to make that happen. So give it a try and move it forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Doxy, can we tie this to soil types? We know certain soil types drain better than others, and we could tie it to a soil type with an elevation, a lot elevation.
Then that's another survey.
No, it's not a survey, because the elevations are available pretty much.
Well, typically, regardless of the soil type, you would still need some type of storage. So, you know, if it's sandy, it's going to infiltrate in the ground down the county. If you're in Moayot, in the stiff soil, clay soil, then if there is an aglet, which, you know, a lot of cases are, but some cases, there's not an aglet for that swale. We're saying they still need to capture that for its rainfall in a swale to let it, it's probably going to sit there in the wintertime in Moayot. But, you know, they're still going to keep it on their site without, hopefully, running on their neighbor.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to follow up with what Commissioner O'Neill said, my, excuse me, given some type of criteria that you could look at and just make a determination.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. If I can. The ordinance proposal in front of you tonight does not add any additional regulation that's already, I mean, this is clarifying what already exists. To Commissioner O'Neill's comments, the staff has discussed this. We are in the process of a UDO rewrite. Part of that is developing a new stormwater management plan, in that we have asked the consultants to, because there are projects of certain scale, nominal size, individual residential lots or small commercial, where if swales are obviously the answer, that we can develop within that ordinance a cross-section or a design standard that we've, that Mike and Eric have looked at, they've already approved it, that somebody who comes in of a small scale can just take that, that design standard and adopt it and apply it without having to go out and get additional consulting engineers or bring any folks on. So we've asked our, the consultants doing the stormwater plan to help design that. So that'll be coming to you probably in the late summer, I imagine, coming to you. But in order to address that, we have asked, but it is not part of this, but this is also not asking for additional regulations. This is clarifying what's already on the books, and we'll bring you something forward here in the summer to address exactly what you're asking for tonight.
Yeah. Thank you for that clarification.
I had a question regarding that, too. As I understand it, this only applies to people applying for the additional coverage in excess of the amount that's allowed, that's only in excess of 30%?
Mm-mm. Applies to everybody.
The piece that Eric spoke to is only for when someone, they only have to go get an engineering plan when they require additional lot coverage beyond what's allowed, the piece that Eric spoke to. The piece that Mike is speaking to already exists. The folks that do, are going to fill lots, are required to come in and bring some minimal level of stormwater plan to the table. And what Mike was saying was, it doesn't define what that plan needs to address. So what we're asking is, as Mike suggested, we actually have engineers who come in who's playing it simply it's going to infiltrate. That's the extent of the plan. So what we're doing now is clarifying that, that they have to do a plan that will address a four-inch rain. So anybody that does fill will have to do a stormwater plan. Anybody who wants to come in and add additional lot coverage actually will have to get an engineer and go through a more detailed master, a stormwater plan, and they'll address that with Eric. So both of these are being driven by actions that the builder or landowner is doing. If they simply go out and build on the lot as is, these two items aren't traded.
We have been requiring engineers to retain a four-inch rainfall since last August, and it hadn't raised any issues. Yes, people complained a little bit, as they always do, but everything. But it has proven that they can easily get the four-inch rainfall stored on their property without running on their neighbors. We put it in the application back in August to see how it was going to work before we brought it to you. It worked pretty good, so now we're bringing it to you, and hopefully you'll...
I ask again, is this going to provide you the flexibility to where every person doesn't have to go spend $1,500 on an engineer?
Well, Commissioner O'Neill made a good point. It's a relatively simple mathematic calculation.
It is.
You take four inches times the square footage of the lot and figure out what size swale would be needed to contain that.
Exactly.
You could probably do it with a spreadsheet. Certainly, you know, somebody could do it in about five minutes, I'm sure, with a calculator.
That's right.
To require that an engineer sign off on it, I think, is an onerous obligation.
So you're telling me that you can help folks get through this without every person having to go get an engineer? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that, yes.
Okay. If you're saying that, I take your word for it, and I can live with that.
And we're going to give them your home number.
Most of them have already got it. But that's fine.
Is any other questions? Hearing no further questions, no one was signed up to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve what's been presented, giving Mr. Doxy the flexibility to override when it's not necessary for the engineered study.
And there may be some concern about, you know, us maybe helping somebody design something and maybe creating a liability. We've talked about that. We always, on the, on the plan itself, get, we have a statement that says, "Currituck County is not responsible for this stormwater plan. No way, shape, or form is Currituck County responsible." So hopefully, ICAS would maybe say that that's sufficient, maybe not. But we always get them to certify a stormwater statement and plan.
Mr. McCree?
We'll work on that to make sure that it is sufficient.
I will second the motion, but I will ask Mr. O'Neill to add one thing to it, to go ahead at Mr. Doxy's suggestion, change it from land disturbance to fill permit.
Absolutely.
I have one question regarding that, too. There are other issues of land disturbance, basically just concerning stripping topsoil to build with. We're not obviating any of those regulations requirements.
No, typically, I believe back when, not Ben, but Gary Ferguson was here, one of the previous planners, was looking at calling it a land disturbance permit, because they were looking at maybe some other way to regulate some of this uncontrolled clearing, clearcutting, clearing a whole lot, stuff like that. And that was maybe one way to, you know, try to do that, but evidently, that never materialized, and it was called a land disturbance permit and not a fill permit.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, say aye. Thank you, Mr. Doxy. Next, we have Item 5, PB 1026, Currituck County Sign Ordinance, Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 7 Signs, and Chapter 17 Definitions of the UDO to reflect changes proposed by the staff and the Sign Ordinance Evaluation Committee. I have, first, we're going to, I'm going to open the public hearing. All persons wishing to be heard should have signed in on the sheet at the podium table. Public hearing will proceed in an orderly fashion and in the following manner to give every person the opportunity to be heard and to ensure that no individual is embarrassed for exercising their right of free speech. Everyone will be given an opportunity to be heard. All comments shall be made from the speaker's podium, and any individual making comments shall first give his or her name and address. In fairness to all in attendance, each person will be given an opportunity to address the board for a period not to exceed three minutes. The yielding of a speaker's time to another speaker will not be recognized. There should be no demonstrations such as clapping, cheering during or at the conclusion of anyone's presentation. I will now recognize the Planning Director to present his staff analysis. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This board is mostly up to speed on this sign ordinance evaluation process rewrite. I've done two work sessions for you previously, but I am going to hit some of the highlights and try to point out some of the, some of the major changes, so you'll have that and be prepared for public comment tonight. This process was originally initiated in spring of 2010, excuse me. At that time, the Board of Commissioners directed the planning staff to facilitate a process to evaluate our sign ordinances. At the board's direction, we included a number of citizens on that committee. We included representatives from the Chamber of Commerce on that committee, and we also included a couple of representatives from our advisory boards, the Economic Development Advisory Board and the Planning Board. That committee itself had six formal meetings. Three of those were actually in Corolla among the Outer Banks stakeholders. And of course, there were a number of other meetings and communications that occurred throughout. And quite frankly, to get through this in a year is actually pretty impressive. I want to say the last sign ordinance took three or four years, so it was a lot of work done pretty quickly. I don't know that it's a comprehensive rewrite, but it certainly changes around the way the sign ordinance is structured. The planning board heard this. They recommended an approval of original draft, I believe that was in December. Subsequent to that, we had two work sessions with this board, one in January to retreat, and then one in February prior to a regular meeting. What you see before you tonight reflects a combination of what the committee did, what the planning board meeting discussed, and then what the board directed at those two meetings. So I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. The sign ordinance itself, and this is, it's real simple as far as the setup, currently today, coming into this meeting tonight, the mainland sign ordinance for the mainland folks is in Chapter 7 of the UDO. The Outer Banks sign ordinance was in Chapter 4 of the UDO. So you had two separate sign ordinances, two separate sections of the ordinance. I can't tell you the number of times that somebody from Corolla walks in and puts down a Chapter 7 ordinance or vice versa. A lot of times, folks get the ordinances confused. So one important thing this did was put all the sign requirements in one section, one chapter. So if you want to do a sign, you've got one place to go, no matter where you're at in the county. That was challenging to try to combine the Outer Banks ordinance and the mainland ordinance. They're very, they are and were very different ordinances. We boiled it down to this basic table of contents. I'm not going to go through all this in detail, but you can see a purpose, what it's about, some general provisions, what's exempt from the sign ordinance, what's prohibited by the sign ordinance, signs that are allowed without a permit, that are, those are usually signs that have some dimension or criteria, but they don't need a permit. And then finally, the on-premise signs, which you have to come in and get a sign permit for. Some of the changes that we tried, and again, there's minor changes in the ordinance, there's editing changes and things, I'm not going to get into all those. I'm going to, again, try to stick to what I consider the more major changes, not to say I'm going to hit everything tonight, but one important thing was to try to consolidate some of the sign types, try to have common terminology between the mainland and the OBX. Tried to do that as best we could. We tried to use more tables. Instead of having just rows of text, we tried to put things in tables, which we hope is a little more user-friendly. We added something at this board's direction, actually, to require a professional appearance. We've got a standard that's going to require folks to not just take a can of spray paint and spray paint some plywood. You've got to have a professional appearance to the sign. And of course, we do this anyways, but we authorize ourselves to go ahead and remove temporary signs and things that are out in the rideaway that shouldn't be there. And we talked about that at our last meeting. Temporary signs was a big issue. We spent a lot of time discussing that. Real quickly, this ordinance allows convenience store signage or the vendor signs at a convenience store. We clarified that. It states that a registered vehicle that has a sign on it, or has signage on the side of the vehicle, is not considered a on-premise sign. So the only way we would cite your vehicle for being a sign is if you parked it out front and it was not registered. So again, I just want to be clear on how we kind of left that. Special events, there's always a lot of talk about the nonprofits and folks that want to put signs out to advertise their special event, and we did make a provision to allow for those types of signs to be out. Mobile marquees, it was, it was decided to continue to allow mobile marquees on the mainland. That's the portable signs you see. And finally, at the last meeting, it was also decided to allow the sandwich board signs to remain out for one additional year. I think the intent of that, as the board knows, was to allow shopping centers and other businesses on the Outer Banks to have time to buy new freestanding signs. And so that one-year extension is included in this. We updated definitions. We talked about the types of signs on the Outer Banks. We prohibited the monopole signs, that's kind of like the popsicle stick signs. So in Outer Banks, you'd be limited to either two-post signs or monument signs, which I think is a better-looking sign for over there. Then also, we required landscaping at the base of all signage, mainland and the Outer Banks. So I just used the Currituck County sign there. You can see there's a two-post sign that has landscaping at the base of it. The landscaping requirements, I wouldn't call onerous, they do require some landscaping to be installed, though. Some of, probably some of the bigger issues, what you hear about a lot tonight, I think, is the size of signs, and these are the on-premise signs, these are the ones you permit. What we did on the mainland was we reduced the size of signs allowed on individual lots, and we increased the size of signs that are allowed for shopping centers. The way the ordinance is today is on an individual lot, so a lot with a single business can have a 250-square-foot sign. And a shopping center in Currituck County, which could have anywhere from 10 to 20 businesses, can have a 160-square-foot size sign. We thought it made more sense to flip that and allow the bigger signs for the shopping centers, for the more businesses, and have the smaller signs for the individual lots. So I put a range of pictures up here, and hopefully, you can see those. The Sonic sign, for example, is an individual lot, that's 120 square feet. What we proposed is between 120 and 160 square feet for individual lots based on the road frontage. You can see the sign for the Sunoco Station down in Grandy, which is no longer a business, but that's an example of a sign that's 155 square feet. So an individual lot can have a sign about that big. And I'm sure most of you probably know that sign down in Grandy. On the mainland, we decided to make allowances for larger signs for shopping centers. So again, the Sandpat Center, which you can see down in Point Harbor, or Palace Point, excuse me, that sign is about 230 square feet. So that would fall in that 200 to 300 square foot range, and we do think that's appropriate. Again, you can see they've got a number of, a number of panels or tiles up there, if you can see that, for the various businesses that are in that large shopping center. So that was kind of where we fell at with the mainland, on-premise signs. Outer Banks, what we did with that is, again, we tried to distinguish the signs between individual lots and shopping centers. Individual lots on the Outer Banks are allowed under this ordinance to have a 48-square-foot sign, and that's all individual lots. I think in the previous ordinance, you could have a 32-square-foot sign. In some lots, if they didn't have appropriate road frontage, didn't, weren't allowed to have any type of freestanding sign. So what we've done is we've made it where every individual lot on the Outer Banks can have a 48-square-foot sign. Then on the shopping centers, we wanted to increase the sign size for shopping centers. The original proposal that the committee put forward was a 72-square-foot sign for a shopping center. That sign you see in the pictures is from down in Agg's Head or Kill Devil Hills, I'm not sure which one, but it's about 70-something square feet. So it's pretty close to what a 72-square-foot sign would be like, maybe a little less. And then, of course, on the right, and I took this from somewhere else, but you see an approximate example of what about 128-square-foot sign could look, and what that does. an approximate example of what about 128-square-foot sign could look and what that does. It gives the ability to get the additional panels on there for the shopping center signage. There's a variety of other things in this ordinance. There's a lot of people here to speak on it, so at this point, as staff, I'll just be happy to answer any questions if any come up now or after the presentations.
Any questions for Mr. Woody?
I have a question. The Outer Banks shopping center signs are essentially minimally larger than a single lot sign on the mainland. 128 versus 150?
Yeah, well, the actual range of the mainland is 128 to 160. So yes, they're at the bottom end of what the mainland allows. Yes, sir.
Anyone else? With that, the first one signed up, Ms. Alicia McDonald. Please give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Alicia McDonald, 965 Sunset Crescent in Corolla. Before I begin, since I'm only limited to three minutes, I don't know whether I'm actually gonna do that PowerPoint presentation, but I would like to change the wording on item number five to reflect the changes proposed by the staff and the Sign Ordinance Evaluation Committee. This is not true. The changes made were made by the Board of Commissioners and not by the Corolla Sign Ordinance Evaluation Committee on two items: the size of the freestanding shopping center sign, the size of the political sign, and also the Sandwich Board signs out for another year. The justification for the Sandwich Board signs out for this, for last year was increase, was to increase sales tax to the county. Over 2009 to 2010, the sales tax went down in May, June, August, and September. The sandwich signs did not prove that they were effective. They were, many times, an eyesore and unreadable at 45 miles an hour. I would like to read the purpose of the sign ordinance. This is the combined sign ordinance for the mainland and the Outer Banks. To support and complement the various land uses allowed in Currituck County, to promote the general health, safety, and welfare of the community, protect the public investment in roadways as well as individual property values, minimize visual distractions to motorists by promoting the reasonable, orderly, and effective display of signs. To, and this is most important, to preserve the environment from excessive and obtrusive signs in support of the Currituck County resort and tourism industry, and to enhance the image, appearance, and economic vitality of the community. It was agreed by the mainland committee consisting of businesspeople, citizens, economic advisory board members, and the planning staff that there was a unique difference between Corolla and the mainland. We split our, after this agreement, we went on to have individual meetings in Corolla, and we continued to look at what was successful out here. Out on NC 12 in Corolla, except for two signs, three signs, every sign out there is 32-square feet. We proposed to do 72-square-feet, which was over a 50% increase in signage. When you increase a sign to 128-square-feet, there is limited space for that sign, especially when at a shopping center that has a double entrance. You, 128-square-foot sign, 12-foot high, can drastically block the right-of-way going into that shopping center. So what we decided that 72-square-foot was fine, we gave it 500-foot, you could have two signs, and we added directional signs for inside the shopping center. It is crucial that when someone goes shopping, to brand the shopping center more than looking for a dress shop or a bathing suit store. When you go down to the Dare Center, and there is Food Lion Belks and all those, it just says "The Dare Center." When you go down to Tanger Outlet, it doesn't list the 20 stores. Listing on 128-
That's fine, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Alicia, you finish up pretty quick.
Okay. I would like to, I would like to just conclude. 128-square-foot sign is fine for the mainland. It is way too big for Corolla. One business in Timbuktu wants a sign. There are 60 businesses in that shopping center. On 128-square-foot, that would give that business a two-square-foot sign. You cannot read a two-square-foot sign with 60 names on a 128-square-foot. Before you is a petition signed by 115 property owners in Corolla who have a major investment in Corolla. We ask that you honor their request for the smaller-size shopping center signs of 72-square-feet, 10-foot high. That was approved by the Planning Board in November of 2010, and was approved by the Corolla Sign Evaluation Committee. And I would like to read to you a, Mr. Hal Brooks is the owner of Timbuktu.
Okay, we need to period up now, please.
Okay. He says he would be very interested in a larger sign, provided that there was, that there was a noticeable difference from the sign that there is now. Due to the size of Timbuktu, I do not think it would be realistic for us to list individual businesses on this side. With this in mind, we'd be interested in a larger sign for Timbuktu with continued restrictions on listing individual businesses. We would also hope that our sign would be in proportion to the size of our shopping center. Smaller centers should have smaller signs. And lastly, it would be possible to have a sign for each entrance, and that we did incorporate in our sign ordinance. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next, we have Marcy Bruce. And we're gonna try to stick with this three-minute thing, so if we're not, we're gonna be here all night, so.
Marcia Bruce, 852 Whalehead Drive in Corolla. First of all, I'd like to know why we can't yield to Alicia.
Because the board-
She has the information more than I do.
It was a decision that the board made.
The last meeting on the 7th of March, you allowed people to yield.
Mm-hmm.
And now this one, you don't. I mean, we all came over here to support Alicia.
This afternoon, we discussed that with the county attorney. What he informed us was that no one is entitled or owns the three minutes. The three minutes is a privilege granted by the Board of Commissioners, and the fact that you do not own it, you cannot give it to someone else. You can't address us for the time limit that's been promised. Now, the fact that we have allowed that to happen from whatever time, you know, historically, has nothing to do with the manner in which we're gonna enforce it in the future.
Well, we drove over here for an hour and 15 minutes because we thought we could do that. It would have been nice if the board had informed us in Corolla of this decision.
As I said, it was made this afternoon in a meeting about four o'clock, and, you know, obviously, we didn't have the means to do that.
Well, then you, for now, grandfathering us that, you should allow us to yield. At the next meeting, that won't happen.
Ma'am, I've read the ordinance that was passed, or that has been discussed, and that's what we're gonna adhere to. If you have comments you would like to bring up for three minutes, please do it at this time.
Okay. I would like to address all the commissioners. As a resident and a homeowner in Corolla, and as somebody that rents a house to the tourists that come here, I'd like the commissioners to realize that the Outer Banks of Currituck is much different than the mainland. You can't have the same kind of signage that you have here on the mainland as you do on the Outer Banks. You just have to realize that it's different, and people that come to the Outer Banks in Currituck come because it's not Kill Devil Hills, it's not Dare County. It's different. And if you've been there, you know that it's different. And I just wish that you would appreciate that in your decisions, which I don't think you have done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eleanor Collins.
Eleanor Collins, 1024 Lighthouse Drive, Corolla. My intention was to yield to Alicia for her PowerPoint. I have no further comment.
Thank you. Next, we have Connie Creif.
I'm Connie Creif on 442 Myrtle Pond in Corolla, and I just wanted to, I came to yield my time to Alicia because I think what she had to say was important, and I don't agree with these changes that you're putting forth. I don't think you understand the special, unique quality of our area, and it's important that you do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mrs. Bonnie McCarthy.
I signed up in order to yield to Alicia.
Next, we have Eddie Joe Powell.
Eddie Joe Powell, 136 Powell Road, Chawbro, North Carolina. I'm here to discuss the on-premise sign and how we were cutting it in half, basically, from 250 square feet to 128 square feet. I was on the sign committee 11 years ago for the on-premise sign, when we then had 300 square feet, and not very many people put up a 300-square-foot on-premise sign. Not very many people have put up a 250-on-premise square foot sign, square foot sign. But we don't want to lose the option. They cost quite a bit. There's probably not a lot of them already here. Cutting it in half is a little extreme for the businesses, the individual businesses. So I speak on behalf of those individual businesses, as well as our own business, that, you know, traffic's still moving at about 80 miles an hour down 168 and 158, and the economy is still not good, and businesses need to be seen. They need to be seen, they need to be able to draw in the revenue so that our personal property taxes won't go up, because our businesses bring in quite a bit of revenue to prevent that. I just think it's a drastic move. I mean, if we'd have said 50 square feet and made it a 200-square-foot sign, that's a little more reasonable than just slashing it right in half and saying, "We're gonna do 128-square-foot on-premise sign." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bob White.
Bob White, I live in Hilltop Road, Swan Beach. I've been in business in Corolla for 14 years. I currently own four businesses, and over the years, I've owned five others that I've sold or leased out, and I've had the pleasure of serving on the Tourism Advisory Board for two years when that was first created. This past year, I tossed my name in the hats, become one of the members of the topic of discussion this evening, and for some reason, somebody thought that was a good idea and tossed me in there, so here I am. We spent about 30 hours, probably totally as a group, over the last several months to come up with what we did. As a resident and a business owner, I was kind of in the middle because I had to look at it from two different perspectives. And I feel good, both as a business owner and a resident, that the signage fit both of those needs, that of representing the businesses with an eye on attractiveness. Businesses today cannot rely on signage alone. If you have road frontage, then yes, signage can be and should be an integral part of advertising. However, if you don't, then you must have ads that direct you to the location in which you place your business. A shopping center by its nature is a destination, and other than one or two anchor stores, you generally don't see all these businesses listed on there. The beach is even worse than a regular metropolitan area in that we have cars, bicycles, runners, walkers, foreign kids riding the wrong way down the street, which you gotta dodge when you're trying to make a left. So having a big distracting sign, I think, endangers pedestrians as well when you're trying to read all this information. You have a brief second to do that. Effective signage can be outstanding, and I'll give you an example. When I was on the Tourism Advisory Board, the Currituck Visitor Center said "Currituck Outer Banks Visitor Center." You could not read the wall sign. I had them change that to say "Visitor Center." That first summer, they tripled their business, just like that, just by putting that simple two words on there. Another great example of that is the ABC Store. It has some other verbiage on it, but everybody knows what the ABC Store is. They probably don't know what it means, but it's a prime example of an effective sign to draw people in. I have one additional area of concern, and that is roof signage. I noticed that we removed that, and there's several buildings there that have roof signage. And I'm just wondering if they'll be able to keep that, replace it, repair it? If a new business comes in, what happens to that? Some of the buildings were designed with that intended. As a group, we said, "We don't want to see this for a myriad of reasons going forward," but felt like existing businesses should be able to have that, or if it changes hands, be able to keep it. So that was one area, the second area that I had a question about. And lastly, I would like to ask the board to adopt our recommendations. We worked very hard to come up with something that I felt fit the area, worked for businesses, and would just work out generally overall without a great expense as well. To put up a big sign like that is gonna cost a lot of money. And maybe see about getting the county to create some kind of pamphlet, or maybe something to help people, our business owners, to understand effective signage. After working with the people in the community, I've discovered that we have a wealth of experience in Corolla. There's a lot of retirees there that have owned businesses that have very good ideas and experience on their own.
Time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Go ahead and finish up.
That was about it, but I would love to see the county maybe try and put together some kind of literature for business owners, have it available on the website, and just so they can understand signage and advertising and how it works for them, or could work for them.
Okay, Mr. White, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Woody, would you like to address his question about roof signs? I don't know how to address it.
Any existing roof signs will be able to remain, and a change of ownership will not have an impact on that.
Okay. Next, we have Bob Schultz.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for having me speak to you this night. My name's Bob Schultz, located at 964 Sunset Crescent, and I'd like to present this from a different perspective, okay? I think what the sign committee did was very important and very worthwhile work, and I think they put a lot of time and effort into it and a lot of ideas into it. I don't think that businessmen solely survive on signs, okay? And I think it's good for our businessmen here to survive, okay, to make a living, and I think that's very, very important. Okay, what I think is we ought to keep the sign ordinance the way it is, but we, as a county and a community, should work together with these businessmen, okay? Give them the tools that they need to make their business successful. Explain to them how they have to provide good service to the customer, good food to a customer, okay, a good environment for the customer, and right prices for the customer. We have a lot of informational people here that have good information and know how to run a successful business. I think we ought to look at that rather than the signs and just go on and put the signs in effect that the committee has worked on. Do you have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. And last, we have Mr. Guy Sides.
Dan, can you put Alicia's slides up, please? Good evening again. It's getting to be a regular thing for me, and it is a long drive, and I'm going back this evening. Again, thank you for taking a little time to listen to this. I'm gonna move forward on several of Alicia's slides. There was a, just to let you know, there was a little rationale behind the recommendations that were made by the sign committee. They addressed the concerns about larger signs. We talked about that. They raised the signs to a larger size, and they wanted to make sure they were readable at 45 miles an hour. And it allows for branding of the shopping center. We've heard that before, heard that from a businessman, that basically a shopping center is branded, and it minimizes the visual clutter in the resort area. In addition to that, as Alicia said, it allowed for two signs, two large shopping center signs, to help in a situation where the entrances were 500 feet apart. So it did address the need for additional signage. And it allowed for multiple signs within a shopping center. If you've been to any shopping centers that, for example, if you go to Duck, and you look at the shopping centers there, they're branded, the shopping center is branded, and then within that shopping center, there are directional signs. Rules of signs, just some thoughts here. If you go, driven back and forth on the highway to Virginia Beach several times in the last couple of weeks, if you look at the signs there, one thing you'll notice is there's a seven-word rule. The signs generally have seven words on them because that's what people can read, and that's what they can retain. The signs support the brand- The signs support the brands, they're memorable, and they support the marketing and advertising efforts that are behind that brand. Putting the names of every business on a sign will not be terribly effective. So let me show you the signs. 32 square feet is what, an eight-feet-high was the original ordinance. The signs went up to 48 square feet. The recommendation was 72 square feet. And this is what the new sign, the 128-square-foot recommendation that came from your retreat. 50% increase over the original sign ordinance. Give you a sense of the sign size. That's a real person there. Next thing is, I guess the question I would have of all of you is, these are the sign boards. If you're driving 35 miles an hour down the street, or 45 miles an hour down the street, and you've got 60 sign boards, can you read them? Here are the recommendations. Honor the process, a process established by the commissioners. It was developed by stakeholders, key stakeholders. You heard one of them this evening, a businessman. It acknowledges that Corolla is a resort area. It addresses concerns raised by the businesses. And it's based on a standard. The U.S. Sign Council has a standard. This wasn't pulled out of the air. This was based on standards that are used for development of signs throughout the United States.
That's time, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. White, finish up.
Finally, we ask that you adopt the proposal that was approved by the planning board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's all that have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Gary Michael Smith. I live at 1123 Carrotank Road in Corolla, and I'm a store shopper, and I'm also director on the chamber board. I was called by Mike Flores today, the last, he could not make it, and he asked me to come represent him and to let you know that the Chamber of Commerce is very much for the ordinance that has been presented today. On a personal note, I want to thank the board for allowing signage signs to go up 365 days a year. My same-store sales from 2009, from 2010, was an 80% increase. And I'll be welcome to sit down with anybody from the county and show them those statistics. But anyway, I'm here on behalf of the chamber, and I've been asked to let the board know that we are in favor of the ordinance as written. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from anyone?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Addressing Ms. Powell's concerns. Explain that to me again, Mr. Woody.
In the current ordinance, shopping centers are allowed to have 160-square-foot sign. Individual lots can have up to a 250-square-foot sign. What's been proposed is to flip that, basically. Individual lots can have signage under this proposed ordinance between 128 square feet and 160 square feet, depending on the lot frontage. I.e., if you have 160 feet or more of road frontage, you get 160-square-foot sign. If you have 160 feet or less of road frontage, you're going to fall somewhere between 128 and 160. Shopping centers. If you have a shopping center that has between four and 10 businesses, you're allowed a 200 square-foot sign. If you have a shopping center that has more than 10, we don't have any of those on the mainland, but if you did, you could have a 300-square-foot sign. So our intention was to make the signage reflect the scale of the business that's erecting the sign.
So in other words, if I have one business on my lot, I can have 125 square foot?
Up to 160.
Up to 160?
Yeah.
So it wasn't cut in half. It depends on your road frontage.
It does. And again, just give the... Since 2005, we've had two signs that have been over 160 square feet in Currituck County.
All right. Now, I want to ask another question about the marquee signs on the Outer Banks. Go right back to Ms. McDonald's with Timbuktu. Because to me, it would seem ridiculous for Timbuktu to put a big sign out there in the middle. Wouldn't it be better off to split the size of that sign and have a marquee sign at one entrance and one at the other entrance? Or are we saying that they would have to put a 128-square-foot sign in the middle?
They could have up to two signs. They could have, they could have one in the middle, or if they chose to exercise their ability to have two, they could have one at each entrance.
But the total square foot would be 128.
It's, as it's written out, it's 128 for either sign. Now, if you wanted to do some sort of division of that square footage, that's appropriate as well.
Well, I'm sharing experience I had with, you know, an state senator was staying in DeSanderland last year, about this time last year. I rode over there to visit, and we rode up to the four-wheel-drive area. And as we were riding, the conversation was, "Where was that place we ate at last night?" And they told me what it was, and I said, "Oh, it's right over there." And the senator's wife said, "Well, how is anybody supposed to find this place when there's no signage?" And I said, "That's something that has to be addressed." But I've had those questions asked of me more than once about, and I'll tell you where the, one of the places is. It's where the restaurant that everybody likes to say he went out of business, because he had a sorry restaurant instead of signage. I don't know why he went out of business. Only he would know that. But that is a shopping center right there. Right there in the middle, you've got a little sign about, I don't know how big it is, but you've got every one of those little things. Nobody would know what's in that shopping center, the way it is. But if they chose to erect a sign, they can put one at each entrance.
That's correct.
Okay.
If you have 500 feet, this is the mainland and the Outer Banks, if you have 500 feet of road frontage, which most shopping center parcels will have 500 feet of road frontage, you're allowed to have a second sign, both of which are the size that's listed. In the Outer Banks instance, 128, and the mainland, somewhere between 160 and upward, so.
But the key to it is 500 foot of road frontage, correct?
Yes.
Would Timbuktu have 500 foot?
I'm sure they would.
What about where a visitor center is?
I'm sure that does, too.
What about the Corolla shops?
The town center? I would think so as well, yes.
Okay. No further questions?
Any other comments?
Mr. Woody, I've got a couple of questions. Let's go back to, first of all, I want to reserve to be able to come back to this. According to, first of all, how many businesses are in Timbuktu? Do you know?
It was approved of 60. I don't know, you know, sometimes they combine, so it could be plus or minus, for sure.
Well, say that there's at least, say, 45, 50?
Probably fair.
Okay. Are you... There's only one sign there now for Timbuktu. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The V sign.
And they would be allowed, under this new ordinance, two signs. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, can we go back to, I guess, where the, where, flying Dutchman, or was it Metropolis?
Yeah.
What I'm trying to drive to, is it possible to take the number of businesses, and that dictates the size of the sign? Like, if you had 10 businesses, I don't think you need 128 square feet. And that's my personal opinion.
That's what we've, I think what we've done on the mainland is we've allocated sign as based on the number of businesses, which should be proportional, in theory, to the size of the center. You can do it by number of businesses, you can do it by square footage, some jurisdictions do it by road frontage. There's a number of triggers you can use to allow signage sizes.
I guess where I'm driving to, I can understand the concerns for 128 square feet, but if you've got, if you've only got 10 businesses, and this is my opinion, that I don't think you need 128 square feet. I think, you know, 72 or, you know, is big enough. Is there any way we can tweak this thing to where the number of the businesses dictates the size of the sign?
Yes.
Based on our allowed non-businesses, or once you're actually operating it, done?
Well, I think it would have to be based on the allowed businesses. You know, I mean, because you have to allow for, you know, for growth, or for open and close, or whatever.
Yeah, it's the same.
Yeah.
If you have a season, they're going to be allowed.
I can tell you the range. Timbuktu was approved for 60. Corolla Lite has, and don't hold me to these numbers exactly, but Corolla Lite has, last time we checked, about 27 businesses. Ocean Club Center South, last time we checked, had about 15 businesses. I know two of those combined recently, so it may be 14 of them. And then, like, for example, probably the next biggest shopping center is the Harris Teeter Center, and I think that has six.
Monterey Plaza.
Oh, Monterey, I'm sorry. Monterey Plaza has 35. I'm sorry. 35 in Monterey Plaza.
But I'm just trying to come up with a plan to where we don't need 128-square-foot sign for 10 or 12 businesses. And I don't know if, you know, what the process is, or what we can do to adjust. And I will say this, I think, I think shopping centers like Harris Teeter, where you have the road sign out front, I don't, to me, that doesn't qualify. They don't need a marquee sign, because you can see from Route 12, everything needs to be in there. So I would like, if there's a way to address that. I know there's a consensus that not everybody's going to put up a sign, but personally, I'd like to see something in there that if you had road frontage, like a shopping center like Harris Teeter, that I don't think they need a, in my personal opinion, a marquee sign. And I'd like to see something in there where the size of the sign is dictated by the number of allowed businesses in there. I don't know if we have to tweak it, or whatever we've got to do, but I'm just asking these questions. Personally, you know, it, I think with the landscaping around it, I think that's going to be key to the whole thing. And then, we've discussed this in the past, these signs are not expensive, or they're not cheap. These signs are going to be real expensive. So I'm not sure everybody's going to take advantage of the signage, anyway. But it's, I do know that, in my opinion, that these businesses have a right to be there. And I know people that are in the back of Timbuktu, and they depend on people walking through their front door. And I know two cases in particular where people have gone into business and mortgaged their homes to open a business, to have an American dream. And to say not to allow them to advertise out on Route 12, I think is unfair. And I know that's been mentioned tonight, that at 35 or 45 miles an hour, you don't see it. But I've had conversations with people that Route 12 is either north or it's south. And in a six-day visit, I will bet you that the average person drives by a shopping center like Timbuktu, I would say, three to five times. So an analogy, in my opinion, of one time you see a sign, you don't see it, but how many times have you driven by the same sign or the same building, and you saw something you didn't need, or you didn't see before? So I think with Route 12 going up and down, there's going to be enough people going up, but I think they deserve signage. About three minutes? Okay. Okay. See, they do it to everybody, you know?
How can Mr. Woody address that without having some time to address it? What you just brought up?
You're the senior member, you and Mr. Etheridge. I'm just, I'm throwing my two cents out. I'm kind of winging it here to reach, and just to give you my opinion, reach a medium here. That's all I care about, is a compromise. I am pro-business. I've had my own business, and I know how important signs are. And I trust me when I tell you, if you've never worked straight commission, you don't know what it's like to have to wait on somebody to walk in your front door, to pay your mortgage, pay your meals, and your hospitalization, and everything else. So I understand where you're coming from, and I also realize that people have a right for a business, and they have mortgaged their hilt. There are businesses in Currituck County that have gone broke, and they've lost their homes because of poor business.
Okay, Mr. Petry, yes, your time.
As it's required, sir.
Anyone else have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Etheridge.
I want to clarify something Ms. McDonald said in her presentation, that the sign would block visibility on entering the highway. The signs cannot go in the right-of-way, is that correct?
Yeah, well, not only can they not be in the right-of-way, they have to set up what's called a sight-distance triangle. So if they're close to an access to a curb cut, they're going to get pushed back off the right-of-way.
So if that sign, just use the example that's on the screen now. If it was allowed to be a bigger sign, it still couldn't exceed where whoever is standing beside the sign, it would have to go inward.
It depends on the right-of-way. I mean, it could go towards...
I'm assuming that's on the edge of the right-of-way.
If that's the case, then yes, it would have to go towards the building. The right-of-way for 12 is fairly large in most spots.
But it cannot go in the right-of-way, and cannot violate the sight triangle. And that's a DOT specification that we've adopted, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Let me ask one more question.
Yes, sir.
How could you address the concerns that Mr. Petry brought forward tonight?
If we want to go, if we want to, if we want to do that, it's not that hard to do. We just graduate this, the, we pick a baseline, you know, we use number of businesses, visibility from 12, we can do a couple of options. Then, based on that, you graduate the sign size. It's really not that difficult to do, if you'd like for me to explore that.
Can you do it right now? Just kidding.
Do it, I could potentially do it, because I know the number of businesses. What I don't know for sure, I don't know all the road frontages exactly, so.
Did you have it next meeting?
I could probably, yes, I make, yes.
I have a comment to make about that, to, just to put things in perspective. You know, we're talking about graduating signs, because, my gosh, 128 square feet is huge. You know, I was in there looking here, this, you know, from edge of this window to that wall, and about what you can see up to there is about the size of that sign. I mean, 10 by 12, 12.8 feet. My wife uses more than that in the closet. None of you would accept a bedroom in your house that size. We're not talking about a big sign, people, compared to what's available elsewhere.
16 by 8 is 128 square feet.
And 10 by 12.8 feet is, too.
What, discussions, if there's questions?
Yes, so basically, I'm saying, in perspective, we're not talking about putting billboards out there. We're not talking about things that are going to overpower the entire vista of what you see. And I, you know, to go through the regular rule of graduating sign size based on number of businesses, when I think we're all going the same way with branding shopping centers, so that people don't have to advertise individual businesses on there, but just giving people something to work with, I think it's a perfectly reasonable expectation. And we do recognize the difference between the mainland and the resort area, which is why the signs are much larger on the mainland than they're on the resort area.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Avery, excuse me. Come forward. I opened the public hearing again. Speak.
Eric Avery, president of BDNA, 133 South Albatuck Road, Point Harbor. I'm sorry to hear that only 262 people made a financial obligation to Corolla. I thought it was like 20,000 to 30,000. But, as you know, most of us are trying to make a living up here, and without signage, obviously, there is a major problem. Not just with signage, on how people are trying to find how to get to a store, or a restaurant, or where they are. And, you know, during the season, 35 miles an hour is the speed limit, not 45. But also, where is this addressing developers that have invested millions of dollars to promote and build and sustain Corolla, as we have done for the last 25 years? There's ordinance against flags, model home signs. None of those have been addressed. And, you know, we have a handful of people complaining, holding things back. I can remember back in the early, before...
The '90s.
That there was nothing up there except wings. Now, we have seven or eight shopping centers, not very much. This is not a real big issue, other than to the handful of people of 262... This is not a real big issue, other than to the handful of people, of 262 people that have invested in Corolla. But what about everybody else? That's how they find out where things are, that's how they see them, businesses, and without signage, and without flags, and without knowledge, you can't sustain going forward in this economy. So please do not let your vote go on people that just don't like signs, or how they look, or flags, because that's how Corolla was built. So I thank you for your time, and I'm sure you'll make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. I will now close the public hearing.
I need to ask, Mr. Woody, one more question.
Okay.
Mr. Avery said two things were not addressed in this ordinance, one was flags. Was, I know that was an issue, has been an issue, an enforcement issue, code issue, has that been addressed, Mr. Woody?
There, there was discussion on flags, and there's been some, some additional flag allowances for subdivisions. I, I would suggest that if, if, I, I don't, I don't know if Mr. Avery's reviewed those changes or not, he'll have to answer that, but there, there was some changes made to it, to allow additional flags.
I know Monterey Shores couldn't even fly their flags, they got flag poles out there on the highway, and they couldn't fly their flags because of the current sign ordinance. I remember y'all had to cite Monterey Shores, didn't you, or tell them that their flags were illegal? Isn't that why they're not flying anymore?
I, I don't know, we've discussed it with Monterey Shores before, yes.
So it was an issue?
They, they have more flags than the current ordinance allows, yes.
But does this address the issue of the flag?
It would not allow them to have what they have.
It would not allow?
No, they have more flag poles than this ordinance allows. Monterey Shores does.
How many flag poles does Monterey Shores have?
Four.
Six? Six? Six, and what would they be allowed to do?
Three.
Everything's cut and out.
Let me ask, ask another question. And, and, and he brought up another issue about model homes, said that we wouldn't allow certain size for model homes, was that talking about a banner, are we talking about flags? What are we talking about on a model home?
You can have, you can have flags for an open house, you can have two, two at the entrance to the subdivision, and one attached to the house.
Yeah, I, let me, let me ask Chairman to call a point of order, please.
Yeah, please, if you want to discuss things, please go to the outside.
Okay.
You can have two flags at the entrance to the subdivision, you can have one flag attached to the house. And then, of course, you can have your, your sign put out, your model home sign, your, your tent sign.
But we don't allow, like, signage on the home that says model home, like they used to do?
Currently, no, there's not, not allowance for a banner, no, sir.
And the rewrite, is it allowed?
In, in this, no, I'm sorry, in this, in this proposed draft, no.
And it's not allowed previous either?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Ma'am, you, you had your three minutes. This addresses what Mr. Avery just told you, and he, he's wrong.
I'm, I'm closing the public hearing, asking the board for a motion. Yes, sir.
I'm going to defer to the Commissioner from Corolla. Just kidding.
I can do it, I can do it.
Boy, I saw you turn white. Mr. Chairman, I think that, I, I do think that what Mr. Petrie has brought up about the number of businesses in a shopping center versus the road frontage is, is a valid point to consider. And I also want a little more clarification on what Ms. Powell brought up. So if you brought them up, are you comfortable with till the next meeting, and give Mr. Woody a chance, if you don't like it, you can still adopt what's proposed to us tonight?
I can live with it. I can live with it.
Okay, it seems to be enough questions that will give Mr. Woody a chance to address some of the questions about the number of businesses, and continue it to the next meeting.
Have a motion to continue, have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. Next agenda item is.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Let's go back and get a point of clarification, are we, has the public hearing been closed?
He closed it.
Public hearing was closed.
Well, I, I think it's going, it's going to make a difference as to whether, what modifications are made would be deemed to be a substantial change, such that there should be a public hearing.
I want to make sure we get it clarified tonight, so that we don't get it in the next meeting and get another delay, because we didn't properly advertise it.
Right, well, as I say, I, I won't know, and I won't be able to bring in an opinion until I, until I speak with Mr. Woody and see exactly what the extent of modification might well be.
Can I answer your question, Mr.?
But, but certainly, if that, if that's the case, then we'll, then we'll probably notice a, a public hearing for the next meeting.
Then we can reopen the public hearing at that time, correct?
We would notice a, a public hearing and, and continue on.
I, I would suggest what planning staff will do is go ahead and advertise it.
Okay, that's fine.
So we're good either way.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Next item is, let's see, item six.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask for a five-minute recess, please?
Yes, sir, signs look a winner to me. We're going to recess for five minutes. I'll call the meeting back to order. Item number six, discussion and consideration of amendment to Article 4, Section 12-62 4, Parking Restriction Code of Ordinances to Authorize Parking West End of Herring Street, Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, as stated, this is a proposed amendment to the Currituck County Code of Ordinances. Currently, your Code of Ordinances prohibits parking along certain streets, particularly within the Corolla area. As proposed, this ordinance would allow for on-street parking on the easternmost stub of Herring Street, which Mr. Woody is going to put up. A, a, I guess a little bit of background might be helpful, that Jason 2 Herring Street is what is now a Corolla, help me, Mr. Woody, the name of the development?
Corolla Bay. Corolla Bay, the Villas at Corolla Bay is the new development.
The Villas at Corolla Bay, and at the time of preliminary plat approval, they were required to provide for on-street parking on that, that portion of Herring Street. So what this ordinance will do is to allow for that condition to be met by that developer. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Let me also remind the board that this being a amendment to the Code of Ordinances, it will be necessary at this, its first reading, for there to be a unanimous vote for it to be adopted. Otherwise, we'll need to come back for a second reading, at which time it may be adopted by a majority vote.
Chairman, I'll move for adoption.
Hold on, just, okay, I just want to find if there's any speakers first.
This is not a public hearing.
It's not, okay, I'm sorry, okay. Have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item number seven, discussion on Ocean Hills 1 Property Owners' Proposed Legislation to Withdraw Streets From Public Dedication, again, Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, I think the board has seen a presentation, the prior board at least once, I think this board also seen a presentation from the Villas, Ocean Hill, Ocean Hill 1 Property Owners Association, with regard to streets within their subdivision. When originally platted, and this subdivision went to record, these streets were dedicated to the public. This community association has come to the board expressing a number of concerns with regard to, first of all, the fact that they now own the, the street rights-of-way, and the need for improvement to those streets, and they also have expressed to the board some concern with regard to their potential exposure to liability, and also some concerns with regard to, to life safety issues due to parking of, of cars along the rights-of-way that have evidently, according to them, prevented emergency vehicles to access properties within that subdivision. Beginning back as, at least in 2008, I met with the Property Owners Association at the time, as they expressed those concerns, and began to broach the idea of the possibility of the county sponsoring or finding some way in which their streets might be withdrawn from public dedication, allowing them to be privatized, and for them to then be responsible for the, the maintenance of their streets, and also to be able to have more, more control over the ingress and egress within, within their subdivision. A number of other meetings have occurred, culminating finally, as this board knows, with a meeting that's occurred in Raleigh, along with me, and Commissioner Martin and Etheridge attending on behalf of the county, representatives of the Property Owners Association, their attorney, and Representative Owens, and Senator White, at which time we discussed, again, the possibility of legislation that might be introduced in the General Assembly that would allow for the withdrawal from public dedication, in particular this street system. The necessity of legislation is because there is no means currently in the general statutes for the withdrawal of streets from public dedication, except in a limited circumstance when, for a period of 15 years, the streets that have been publicly dedicated have never been opened and used. But of course, that does not, that is not the circumstance here. So we've gone through a number of iterations of this particular piece of legislation. Of course, the commissioners have indicated what concerns they have had with various drafts of it, and minimal requirements that they would, that the board might want to see if it was inclined to be supportive of this legislation being introduced at the General Assembly. Staff also has provided comments along the way, and now, tonight is before you a final version of this proposed legislation, which is, if this board is willing to endorse it, and that's what Senator White and Representative Owens are asking before it will be introduced, it will be introduced as a public bill, because under the North Carolina Constitution, legislation that relates to this, this type of matter, streets and roads, cannot be by a local act, which of course, we are very familiar with. That, that's why, in this particular instance, it is written in fairly broad terms, but one of the concerns that we expected and hoped it would be addressed is that it would be narrowed in scope to the greatest extent possible, so that there might well only be one place on earth where this legislation might apply, and that'd be Ocean Hill 1 subdivision. And so now, this, what is before you tonight, again, you'll, you will see in, in Section A, 10 criteria that would have to be met before the Board of Commissioners could even entertain adopting a resolution that would withdraw streets from public dedication within a subdivision. That, that again, is an attempt to make this so narrow in scope that it may well, might well only apply in this particular circumstance. But I'll note, in, in Section A 1, was added at, at the suggestion of staff, that we further limited by a description saying that the subdivision has to be bounded on the east by the Atlantic Ocean. And the Property Owners Association has, of course, added that language to the proposed legislation. Another concern that was addressed by the Board of Commissioners was, of course, the desire and intent to preserve public beach access. Currently, there, there are three public beach accesses in Ocean Hill 1 subdivision, and there was a concern expressed by commissioners that the public might lose its ability to access the public beaches if these streets were privatized and that right then somehow taken away. This bill now includes a language that will preserve, first of all, pedestrian easement access through this, along the streets of the subdivision as, as it exists right immediately before the withdrawal of the streets from public dedication. There's, secondly, a concern, I think also that, that was with regard to the, the pedestrian access, particularly to the public beach, a concern that there not be a gate placed upon, or other obstruction placed upon the roadway. There is now the provision added to the proposed legislation that there would be no gate or other obstruction placed across the street or segments of streets, unless approved by the Board of Commissioners upon finding by the board that other methods of preventing unauthorized parking or preserving public safety have proved inadequate. So it would have to come back before a Board of Commissioners, again, before there could be a gate or obstruction placed upon the streets. There were other concerns with regard to whether property owners within the subdivision actually understood what withdrawal of streets from public dedication might mean to them, and what effect it might have on their subdivision and responsibility they would be undertaking. And that concern expressed by the commissioners, of course, was that there be some type of vote by the Property Owners Association before the withdrawal could be effective. That now is shown as part of the criteria, A 10 in particular, where the, the declaration of withdrawal would have to be approved by two-third majority of the members of the Property Owners Association. So that, that issue and concern has been addressed. There's also a concern expressed, in fact, when we were meeting in Raleigh with Representative Owens, that the county might want to assure that, particularly in this instance, for one of the purposes for this legislation is because this particular community wants to improve its streets and repair them, that that actually occurs. And so that concern was expressed to the Property Owners Association, and there is now language in B 3, that provides that the clerk to the Board of Commissioners shall only sign the declaration of withdrawal, that of course, is after approval by the Board of Commissioners, upon completion of improvements to the covered streets in accordance with a plan for such improvements submitted by the property owners that complies with any public street standards required by the county on the date the subdivision plat was recorded, as certified by the county engineer. So that concern has been addressed. There's a couple of other concerns. First of all, preserving access via the, a street system within a subdivision to property that may not actually be part of the subdivision, but is relying upon a portion of that street system for access to the property. For us here locally, that's the Carl stub, Carl Lane stub issue. That provision has also now been addressed, such that a portion of a street or road that is required for the reasonable means of ingress and egress by another property owner would not be subject to withdrawal from public dedication if that fact existed, and that would apply, and the Carl Lane stub issue, and preserve that property owner's right on the west side of NC 12, to be able to access their property. There's also an issue that was raised, that Currituck County policy, and as set out in our Unified Development Ordinance, requires that subdivisions have interconnectivity, that subdivisions, as they are created and start to butt up against one another, that there is a interior road system that, that runs from subdivision to subdivision. And so there was a concern, maybe not so much so in, in Corolla, but at least that, that if this would be applied in, in any other coastal community or on our mainland, as in an earlier draft, it would have applied on the mainland, that we not lose that interconnectivity. And so now there is a provision set forth in the proposed legislation that ensures that, that the interconnectivity that, that might be required, any such street necessary for the interconnectivity would be excluded from the withdrawal from public dedication. Another issue was to ensure that, of course, public utilities are in these streets, street rights-of-way, and so we want to make sure that there would not be the loss of the public utility easements, that's necessary for the county's water system, as well as for electric telephone or other public utilities. That language has now been added as well, that would preserve the public utility easements within the streets, should they be withdrawn from public dedication. So bottom line is, I think all the concerns that have been expressed by the commissioners, in particular over the last month or two, and by county staff as far back as 2008, have now been included within this legislation, such that it is a much better proposed legislation than, than was originally presented to the Board of Commissioners. I'd be glad to answer any questions, and also I will note that representatives of the Property Owners Association from Ocean Hill are, of course, are here, and their attorney, Mike Bro, is here as well, and, and I know Mr. Bro is more than happy to answer any questions that the board might have, should you need any further clarification.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. McCree, or Mr. Bro, or the property owners?
I would like to, to address just one, Mike. This does not, in fact, if they privatize a road, does not jeopardize personal safety in any way, as far as for the residents, for fire, police, ambulance, traveling on those inner roads that have been privatized.
Well, that may be an issue that we have to deal with, I think it could be dealt with by a subdivision that had its streets withdrawn from public dedication by providing the necessary easement or authority for public safety vehicles to have access to their, to their property. have access to their property. Frankly, I don't know the answer with regard to regular police or law enforcement patrol by the sheriff's department. That might well be an issue that, I don't know what the sheriff would be inclined to do in that circumstance.
Mr. Bro.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think the answer, first of all, thanks for having us this evening, and I think Ike has done an excellent job of explaining the bill. All I would just do is say what he said, and I don't think I can add too much to that with, before I get to the specific question, just one thing, is just to emphasize that with this legislation, your endorsement of it this evening, if you're inclined to do so, and I hope you are, doesn't allow any roads to be withdrawn from dedication. All it does is set in motion a process which, if approved by the General Assembly, would then have to come back to you for approval, so. But with respect to that particular issue, keep in mind that all those shopping centers and other things that you were talking about earlier are private vehicular areas, and the police and the ambulances have no problem accessing them. There's certainly no physical obstruction going to be there, and clearly there, that's not going to be a problem or an issue. I mean, nobody's going to object to an ambulance coming down the street to save somebody that got called 911, nor could they, so that's not going to be a problem or an issue.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? No questions? Do we have a motion?
I would move that we, we had them pass this and...
I think my motion would be that you, that the Currituck County Board of Commissioners endorses the introduction of this particular piece of legislation by Representative Owens to the General Assembly.
I so move. Thank you.
Have a second? Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We used to have discussion before we voted.
Do you want to discuss?
It's voted on now. I voted for it, but I was just going to reaffirm the fact that there is no parking places for the public beach accesses. So there is no parking that's not going to be there because it's already not there. And I emphasize the fact that the pedestrian beach accesses will be preserved. To me, that's the big issue, is to make sure that the pedestrian beach accesses are preserved with you have.
That's correct.
And that Carl Lane is taken care of.
And you just dealt in your last matter with regard to prohibition of parking ordinance, and the streets within this subdivision are included as part of that ordinance that prohibits parking, so there is already another layer of protection with regard to parking on the rights-of-way within this subdivision.
Thank you. Item number eight, appointment to the Board of Adjustments. I think...
This is the only appointment still outstanding.
That's mine. I'm going to ask the board's indulgent because the individual I had withdrew his name this afternoon.
Okay.
Till the next meeting.
Okay, Mr. Etheridge is asked to continue it, so that's what we'll do. Item number nine is consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, sir.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 10 is Commissioners' Report. We'll start with Mrs. Gilbert this evening.
The only thing that I want to add is the concern with the traffic coming out, in and out of the development at Ranchland onto Carrottoke Highway. We had a severe accident on Friday evening. I am taking that for action and venturing into some options with that, so just to let the citizens know that I'm working on that.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Petrie.
I would like to report that this past Saturday night, the Corolla Wild Horse Fund had their second annual Night at the Races, and we were able to raise, Mr. Woody was there, we were able to raise over 200 people and able to raise, right around, we're hearing around $9,000. So it was a team effort, and I'd like to just acknowledge the Corolla Wild Horse Fund and the people that run it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rohr.
I happen to have the pleasure of attending that event as well, and I'd like to thank the Wild Horse Fund for actually sponsoring that, and Mr. Petrie's being very modest because his wife was the chair of that particular event, and I think he did a marvelous job putting it together, but it was a lot of fun, and next time you have a chance, everybody should come to it. I would like to report that in meetings with the Northeast Workforce Development Board, which is a subset of the Albemarle Commission, this past week was the first one that the new board has had. There are a lot of things underway which should be able to help businesses in this area, particularly things involving incumbent employee training, that's for additional training for employees that your businesses may already have. There are provisions for funding on-the-job training for new employees, and there are also some projects underway which just came out this time for helping people of entrepreneurial bent to actually start businesses of their own. And if anybody has any of those type situations, would like to know more about it, Peter Bishop, our Economic Development Director, is certainly the resource to go to for that. I'd be glad to answer any questions as well, and we sure would like to help anybody that's interested in starting a business or creating some jobs, might help some of the folks out here looking for one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rohr. I was very disturbed Sunday to read in the Virginia Pilot Hampton Road section that we've been hearing about the ferry division looking at, putting tolls on the ferries throughout the state. Now, one of the options they have come up is to shut down the Knights Island Ferry. That Knights Island Ferry is a lifeblood for the people, and our schoolchildren from Knights Island to interact and get to school over here on the mainland. So I think that is a terrible mistake. I called Mr. Representative Owens yesterday. He will be setting a meeting up for me to go to Raleigh to speak with the House leadership people week after next. I've asked Mr. O'Neill to go with me, and I would like for anyone else who would be interested in going to go. I think Mr. Scanlon will probably go with us as well, and we're just going to voice our displeasure with some of this stuff. Ms. Keane, I talked with Ms. Mary this afternoon, and I asked her, if you would, to please put together for me a list of the delegates that are the key people that we need to send letters to. I will put that out Knights Island to the, on the email sites and to the residents over there, posted at different places, so they can become active and involved. With that, that's all I have this evening, and I realize, I know that we have a resolution here that I signed this evening, opposing the elimination for the Knights Island Ferry route or tolls for Knights Island Currituck Ferry. So we are sending a resolution to our representatives, expressing our displeasure with this. Thank you. Mr. O'Neill.
Mr. Chairman, I have two quick issues. The first one is, you eloquently discussed the Knights Island Ferry. Dare County's having a similar problem with Oregon Inlet.
I agree.
I mean, not Oregon Inlet, but the Okra Coke Ferry is charging $10, $15, $20 each way or whatever. But the other thing I wanted to bring up is Oregon Inlet. Also in the paper this weekend, they're talking about, and they've been talking about it for the last couple of weeks, the possibility of the closure of Oregon Inlet because they're no longer going to be able to dredge it because of funding issues. I know that tonight, or today, or tonight, whenever it was, Dare County and Hyde County are passing resolutions asking that not, that not be done, and I'm going to ask our board to pass a resolution. Ms. Keane's going to be resolutioned out, but a resolution asking the Corps of Engineer to continue with the funding for that. Several of us met with Congressman Jones today, and that was a topic of conversation along with the roads and the four-wheel-drive area and the problems with the Corps of Engineer and the basin at the Whalehead Club. So I'd like for us, without objection, to send a resolution on behalf of Oregon Inlet, and Ms. Keane can contact Dare County and will just mirror their resolution, if that's okay with everyone.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the second issue I have is, Mr. Bishop is working diligently with the work program that the Board of Commissioners has asked the Economic Development Board to undertake. As I said before, over the last couple of years, they've done a lot of studies, and they've done a lot of work to get us to the point where, with Mr. Rohr on there, they've done a lot of work to get us to the point where we start doing the marketing and pursuing economic development. So I just want to let you all know that the suggestions that each of you gave and that we give to Mr. Bishop, he's working on those, and that will be the, unless you all tell me otherwise, that's going to be the work order that the ED Board undertakes the next time we meet to start making those things happen.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Mr. Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ditto what Commissioner Rohr and Petrie said about the Night at the Races for the Corolla Wild Horse Fund. Another thing, just as public safety, it's springtime and farmers are on the highway with tractors moving up and down. People, please be careful when you come up on one. The last thing I'd like to address is what was said here tonight in a public hearing on the signs, contrary to what maybe people have the opinion of this board members, and I can't speak for each of you, but I feel like I can. We do go over to Corolla quite frequently, all of us. We understand what is important to keeping Corolla a vibrant, beautiful community, and I don't take things for granted, none of this board takes things for granted. We understand that actions have implications, and what we're trying to do is balance what is needed by the business community to survive in the Corolla community, and for that matter, in the Currituck mainland community, so that they can continue to provide services that these people want and desire and need to have. So I take offense to being told tonight, or having my integrity questioned, about we don't understand what is important and what makes Corolla unique or different. Yes, we do, and we will continue to understand that, and we'll make decisions based on what is right for all of Currituck County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Etheridge, excuse me.
Two weeks, two weeks ago, Commissioner Etheridge and I attended the National Association of Counties meeting in Washington, DC, and there we were involved in discourse with other commissioners from around the United States with common problems, and believe me, budgets are the primary concern of every one in this country. We also had classes that we could attend and presentations, you know, that would impact on things that involved us, and one of them I brought back was lessons learned. What do we know about disaster recovery? And I would address it to the manager, since I brought this back for him. You know, we have a, we have an emergency management team. We're out there and we're ready to go. We know what to do in case of hurricanes and everything, but one thing that they made perfectly clear was, what do you know about recovery? After it's hit, after you've taken care of everyone, then what do you do? And they gave a guideline, and I brought that back to share with the, with our staff, so perhaps they can learn from that, because we are, you know, ever so close and we're all aware of things that can happen, just like happened in Japan. And I think we need to be, you know, prepared, and God knows how you can get prepared for something that's happened to those people there. Also, a question for the manager, do we still have the free prescription discount cards available to the people in Currituck County?
Yes, we do.
And I'd just like to reiterate, I brought that back also, that if you are uninsured, you can, can they pick these cards up?
They can pick them up from the manager's office.
From the manager's office? And what it does, if you don't have insurance, it provides a discount for all the local pharmacies. It's a prescription discount card. So if you do not have insurance and you are, you know, taking a lot of medicines and your prescriptions are pretty expensive, I know, as I get a little older, I have to take a pill every now and then, but come in, call his office, call Mr. Scanlon's office, and you can get a free discount at the local drugstores, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to respond to Mr. Martin's comments. We actually have on April 5th and 6th, a two-day workshop that our emergency management team has put together, and it focuses almost exclusively on recovery. It deals with long-term sheltering, debris recovery, reentry. We're partnering with the state of North Carolina. We've, we've sent notices to volunteer fire departments to participate, forestry service, but we actually have a two-day conference coming up. It's going to be here, and it's going to be focused on, again, disaster recovery.
Where's it going to be held at?
It's right here at his courthouse.
With that, item number 12, I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to GS-143-318.11. Three, to consult with our attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and four, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Director.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Ayes aye.